Okay, can I have a motion to enter public session?
Yeah, turn your mute off, Bill.
I'll make a motion, that's Courtney.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, and we'll call them, we'll be next, Mr. Masler? Mr. Nevins?
Here.
Mr. Mrs. Wilson?
Present.
This is Jeff Schuler. And Mrs. Pledge of Liza?
Of the United States of America. The Republic. And one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and introduce the moment of silence.
So I was gonna, I was gonna take a moment if we could spend 30 seconds and take a moment, a moment of silence for this crisis and this unprecedented time that we're living in and to all of the folks that we have lost, not just in New York, but worldwide, just wanted to take a moment of silence to recognize that. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Good to see everybody virtually. Or we can't hug and handshake at this time. It's very lonely. No matter who you're talking to every day, all day, I'm on calls all day, every day, seeing people, it's just, it's still lonely, even though we don't, we don't get to see everybody every day, so. Okay, we have comments for the public on agenda items at this time. Just a reminder of those members of the public in attendance. This is one of two opportunities afforded members of the public to comment on and inquire about agenda items. Members of the public also have an opportunity at the end of the evening's agenda to ask questions or voice comments or concerns on matters not formally noted on the agenda. We do appreciate everyone's cooperation. Do we have anything at this time?
I would just want to note here that per the directions on the webpage, public comment is being accepted via an email address. The link is on the webpage, veecomments@manans.org. And at this time, we have no comments, but we will keep that open and accept comments for the second public comment at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, so if we, if anybody types anything in, we'll address it at the end of the meeting. There's a formal time for that. Okay. See, so we have approval of the minutes is the first, first item. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Any questions about the minutes from the last meeting at all?
No.
Are, if there are none, could I get a resolution, please? And we'll just go in order that we typically do, the way we sit together. That would probably be easiest, right? So Courtney would probably, would start us off.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Manans Union Free School District, accept the minutes of the March 9th, 2020 meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There's the bell. No, no gavel tonight. Moving along to business matters. We have a few discussion items tonight. We have the COVID-19 in school operations that Dr. Long will talk about, as well as a building project update. And if you could, while she's speaking, everybody could, if they could mute your microphone, that would be great, and I will do the same.
Thanks, Jeff. And it's, it's, I spent some time putting together my thoughts, my comments relative to COVID-19. We have not been together as a group since this all started to play out. And in, very unfortunately, we haven't seen our kids in a really long time. So I did prepare some remarks that I will read for the most part, because I want to make sure I cover everything I want to. I cannot promise you I will not get emotional. So. That said, I'm not even sure where to begin. What we have endured over the past several weeks is like nothing we have ever seen. This pandemic has upended things as we know them, impacting our community, both locally and globally. In my 31 years in education, I have never seen anything that has impacted in such a significant way the work that we do for kids and how we do it. Our students were last here on Friday, March 13th, and our staff returned on Monday, the 16th, and Tuesday, the 17th, and mobilized to create, prepare, and distribute meaningful opportunities for engagement and learning in advance of the closure dictated by the governor on the 18th. The effort was her plan, and faculty and staff did an amazing job. I think most of us thought this would not be for the long term. To that end, our maintenance staff and our custodial staff scoured the building and sanitized it, preparing it for our students' return. That all changed quickly. Our initial plan was to engage students so they would not regress, and we were now faced with providing opportunities for new learning. Again, our faculty and staff stepped up. We also partnered with districts across the region in an effort that was spearheaded by Capital Region BOSEs, and I can't thank them enough for their leadership in this regard and the positive impact that their work has made for students and teachers throughout the region. I also have to acknowledge Mrs. Schroeder for coordinating and facilitating this work with our teachers and for our students. During those first two weeks, we were also tasked by the governor with providing meals, as well as coordinating childcare for impacted essential workers. A huge thank you to our business official, Mrs. Seetek, and for our kitchen staff, Chef Mike and Christine, who have been here every day since to prepare and disseminate breakfast and lunch. Another group who stepped up was our contract bus companies. Both Durham and Star and Strand are delivering meals to our students daily. We were able, again, in coordination with BOSEs, but more specifically with our partners and neighboring districts, North and South Colony, to get childcare options up and running for our essential workers. Two weeks went to four and then to eight. Our kids were working hard to adjust to learning from home. Our teachers were learning and implementing new platforms to engage and educate our kids, and our parents were thrust into the role of home educators. It was and continues to be challenging, but in true Manans fashion, we have come together as a school community to make it work. Friday, April 3rd. Sorry. Our faculty and staff paraded around the village, escorted by Manans PD and Fire Department. It was an emotional day for our students and our staff, but we all needed it. Now I can't read my notes. Our goal since this erupted was to do everything in our power to keep our kids safe and healthy and provide them meaningful learning opportunities. In ordinary times, we operate from the perspective of all hands on deck. This has only been heightened during this time. Though this has been by far the greatest challenge I have faced as an educator, it is in many ways the most rewarding. I am so proud to be the superintendent in a school and community that cares this much about our kids. We are certain to continue to face uncertainty and challenges as this plays out. And when we are able to return to school, and I am certain that we will continue to work successfully through it, we have to for our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Long.
All right, do we want to go back into building project update? In, in all of this, I have been trying to encourage people to find the silver linings. I really do believe that good will come from this. There was a little bit of uncertainty as it pertained to school building projects when this all began to play out. And if indeed they would be deemed essential of, under the governor's order. That was concerning for us, because we know we have a limited time to get our work done in, because the remaining work is in the areas that students and faculty will need to occupy. So that was scheduled predominantly to be done this summer. Also concerning was, in the event we were not be able to continue and complete, what if any impact would that have on the aid that we are, we're anticipating coming through as part of next year? The good news is that finally, we did, in a short period of time, receive clarification that we would be able to move forward with our building projects. And we have even accelerated that a little bit in coordination with CS Arch, with our contractors. Because we do have portions of the building that are currently accessible, we will be moving forward with some work beginning as soon as next Monday, knowing certainly that if, if we return, our students have to be able to access their spaces. So the good news in that is we are actually getting a jumpstart on some of the work. We do not anticipate not being able to complete on time, based on the information we have now, and that that aid will flow as we anticipated it flowing.
That is good news. This is the week you guys are packing up, right? Because they're going to start on Central Office?
We're surrounded by boxes as we speak.
Anybody have anything related to that? We'll move along then to Business Office for Information. Enclosed for the information of the board are copies of warrant numbers 45, 48, 49, and 50 Fund A, and warrant numbers 19 and 20 Fund H of March of 2020. Any questions along those lines? We also have Business Office for Approval. Looks like a budget transfer in March of 2020, and we do have a resolution after that, if there are no questions. Along to the resolution.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approve the attached budget transfer for March 2019. Should that be 2020?
Well, I'm in the agenda in the minutes accordingly, John. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I forgot, I forgot, I follow. John, sorry.
Hollywood squares look up, up, straight up. You can follow, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move along to the Treasurer's Report. Anybody have anything related to the Treasurer's Report?
Oh.
If that is the case, then we will have a resolution, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approve the Treasurer's Report for the month of March 2020.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. All right, we will move along to the bid rejection. Bid rejection for school year special needs and homeless transportation, contract number two. Whereas, the Board of Education receives bids in response to bid specifications for a contract to provide school year special needs and homeless transportation, request for bid for student transportation, contract number two. And whereas, it has been determined that the best interest of the district will be promoted by rejecting all of the aforementioned bids received with respect to such contract. And whereas, the Board of Education has the discretion, reject all of the aforementioned bids received. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education hereby rejects all bids the district receiving connection with the school year needs and homeless transportation contract. Any narrative you want to put on that, Dr. Long, or that's pretty self-explanatory?
No, we had five bids, and then four we are awarding tonight out of the RFP. One, we had negotiated separately, that's why the rejection, and we were able to commandeer a better rate. So the next couple will all fall out of that.
Okay, so bid award, bid for student transportation multi-year contract, five years. If there are no questions, can I get a resolution, please? You're on mute, Bill.
Sorry, let you get going too far. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent, the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District hereby finds the following vendors to be lowest reasonable bidders, meeting specifications with respect to bids opened on February 20th, 2020, and hereby award such vendors the following student transportation contacts respectfully. Durham School Services Home-to-School Contract Number One, Durham School Services Field Trips and Sport Trips Contract Number Three, Durham School Services Summer Home-to-School Contract Number Five, Star and Strand Summer Special Needs Contract Number Four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries.
Do we need a resolution and a second to reject the previous bid?
I'm sorry, Courtney, say again.
Jeff, the one that you read about the one that we're rejecting, did we need a resolution and a second? For that?
We have a resolution, maybe we just needed to...
Yeah, Jeff read, Jeff read the resolution, so why don't we go ahead and have somebody second it?
I'll second it.
So going back, we are under the bid rejection that I read. Courtney is seconding. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you for pointing that out, Courtney. Someone wants to mute their microphone, I can continue. Thank you. So we have now, we have Star and Strand Transportation, Inc., approved contract extension at CPI for 20, 2020, 21 school year. Can I get a resolution, please? Or two of them?
Do you want me to read both?
We'll read one, and then we'll...
Okay.
Second that, and then read the second one.
Okay. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District hereby authorizes the extension of the current special education transportation contract between the district and Star and Strand Transportation, Inc. for the 2020, 2021 school year at CPI, subject to the approval of the New York State Education Department. And then I think that's to you, John, to second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. So if you want to go ahead and read, read the second resolution, please?
Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Superintendent or designated to execute an extension of the current special education transportation contract with Star and Strand for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Move along. We have change orders now. Be it resolved, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm not going to read that, change orders.
Can I comment on that before we, before I comment? I just want the board to be aware that these were both owner requested change orders. And they removed all of the wiring from the existing hallways leading to the old security and phone system. Remember, there was channeling along the walls, probably at about head height, that ran throughout the building. Wires were removed from that, and all the new wires now have been placed above ceiling level. So they aren't accessible easily. We asked DLC to come through and remove all the old wiring and remove all the channeling, and then we asked Bunkoff to come in and prepare all of those walls to be paint ready. Those were untouched areas that still had the yellow paint on them. And since they did that, which they actually finished up right before our closure, because our maintenance staff has still been here to some extent, all of those walls have been now painted gray to match all the renovations in addition.
All right, if there are no questions, can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby approve the following change orders, as listed.
Just before you second, and I didn't unmute in time to ask a question, I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut John off.
Go ahead, Bill.
Where does this put us then, money-wise, with change orders and the end of this project? Where are we standing with that?
Still, where we stood when CS Arch came and talked to us, I want to say it was in March, Bill. We were in pretty good shape. I do not have that figure in front of me or off the top of my head, but I can certainly follow up with an email. But we were in pretty good shape at that point.
I, I just want to express my same reservations I have with increases in this, but I understand that it was school requested, not bid, contractor bid misinformation. It was requested additional work.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
John read the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We still need, I'm sorry, we still need a second.
I second.
I talked to Jen, okay, Jen did second, okay. Second, all in favor?
I heard ayes.
Opposed. Resolution carries. So we will move along to the BOS, the Annual BOSEs Board Election and Administrative Budget Vote 2020, 2021. Administrative Budget Vote. So before we go into the resolutions with this, how do we need to proceed as far as voting and doing all of that?
Okay, so the first thing is the budget vote, and this is different than school budget votes, because it is not voted on the public. So you'll hear a bit later in our budget presentation that we don't have a firm date for that, but we are good to go forward with that. So the Board, if they are in agreement, would make the resolution and approve the budget. Then you would read the introduction to the vote, and before the resolution, Gene will poll each board member on the four candidates.
Okay, so someone, does someone read the resolution?
Yeah, you would read the opening part. You normally read, then Gene will poll each board member. It's kind of a exercise, because there's four seats and four people, but we have to do a poll vote for what we report to BOSEs.
Yeah, just so folks know, I attended that meeting virtually, so I'm well aware of the candidates, as well as the, the, the budget that they put forth. So I don't have any reservations with it. They went through it very thoroughly, and each of the candidates are either running again or were new, and if you need more information on their bios or anything of that nature, they're on their website, but they were very thorough in, you know, describing themselves and their experience. Okay, so BOSEs Board, let's see, BOSE, okay, Administrative Budget Vote. I need a resolution, please.
That the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Albany, Schoharry, Schenectady, Saratoga Counties be authorized to expend the sum set forth in the administrative budget document in the total amount of $12,193,150 during the school year 2020, 21, and to raise such sum by assessments to component school districts, non-component school districts, other BOSEs, and other sources as required by law.
You're on mute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It happens, Bill.
Aye. Seriously.
Administrative Budget Vote Resolution carries. So we will move along to BOSEs Board members, voting for four of the below-listed candidates. The persons listed below have been nominated to serve on the BOSEs Board of Education. Each component school district Board of Education may cast one vote each for up to four individual candidates, but there is no statutory requirement that they cast one vote per vacancy. Only one vote may be cast by, for any one candidate. There are four positions for the term of three years.
Okay, I guess that's where I come in. All those in favor of Mr. Bergeron?
Aye.
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 That was everybody. All those in favor of Mrs. Nancy Del Prado?
Aye.
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 All those in favor of Mrs. Naomi Hoffman?
Aye.
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 And all those in favor of Mr. John Fallon?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Did that better than in person.
You know, the guy, John Fallon, I think has been on the BOSEs Board as long as I've been alive.
Yep. So now...
A little bit younger. I'm not too young, but he's been on there for at least four decades.
So now, Jeff, we need the resolution to, to cast the vote on behalf of the board.
I'll, I'll, I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the one vote be cast for the following BOSEs Board candidates. Mr. John Bergeron, this is Nancy Del Prado, this is Naomi Hoffman, and this is John Fallon. All in favor? Actually, we need a second first.
I'll second.
Everyone jump in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution carries for each of those candidates. Now we'll move along to personnel. We have appointments. Dr. Long isn't doing enough work, so we're going to make her the data protection officer.
There really is not much of a choice there. And that's just to comply with requirements under Ed Law 2D, which will fully take effect in July of this year.
Okay, so can I get a resolution, please, if no one has questions?
Is that me?
All right, who, who read the last one? Yeah, it is you, yep.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District appoint Dr. Maureen Long as Data Protection Officer effective immediately through the end of the 2019, 2020 school year at no additional compensation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. Move along to unpaid leave of absence. Catherine Nissarian, an elementary teacher, Kathleen, Catherine, sorry. Nissarian has requested to take unpaid leave of absence for the remainder of her 12-week FMLA period from April 23rd, 2020 through May 21st, 2020. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Manans Union Free School District, approve the unpaid leave request from Catherine Nissarian from April 23rd, 2020 through May 21st, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. The next is unpaid leave of absence. Lauren Hayes, music teacher, Lauren Hayes has requested an unpaid leave of absence for the remainder of her 12-week FMLA period from May 4th through June 1st, 2020. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approve the unpaid leave request from Lauren Hayes from May 4, 2020 through June 1, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution carries. I trust both ladies are doing well with babies. Everything good? They have boys, girls?
Both boys. And everybody is doing well.
Good to hear that.
Subs for both of those classes?
Yes, they've been filled all long court. They're just moving from paid leave to unpaid leave now, because of the duration under FMLA. So subs have been troopers, and they really didn't anticipate what we're dealing with right now, I don't think, when they signed on. They're great.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to Board of Education Matters. CSC, CPSC recommendations. Can I get a resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Manans Union Free School District approve the CSC, CPSC recommendations as submitted.
Second. All in favor?
I'm online.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Okay, Bill?
I still don't know how subtle my microphone is, because I just said, oh, I'm online, and I don't know who heard that, so, okay, we're good.
Harm no foul. All right. Okay, we have student matters. Class size update as of the 10th of April. Looks very healthy at 3:01. How's everybody doing?
We're good. Dr. Long, you wouldn't happen to know, like... how our population of kids are actually doing with the off-site learning? Has there been any feedback, any information on attendance on the, on virtual classes and things that are happening?
Sure, I can talk a little bit about that. You know, I said in my opening remarks that really the main thing was to make sure we were engaging kids because all of the guidance and direction, and we're seeing it from NISP and any other number of groups, is it's not just learning, it's making sure we're connecting with kids. So we had a really, in my opinion, a very concerted effort to do that. And I think we were pretty successful. In all honesty, some of the kids that we are challenged with engaging now are some of the same kids we're challenged with engaging when we are here. But to that end, I think our sensitivity is heightened that they may be dealing with some other things, and we really need to connect. Our teachers have done a tremendous job across the board. Mrs. Schroder has been working with grade band teams, K-2, 3, 5, and 6, 8. So meeting weekly to assess who is participating, who may not be, who may not be as much as we would like to, who we might have challenges engaging. And what we did last week was we developed basically a master list by grade level and homework of every student in the building. And we indicated, working again with those grade-level teams, students who are fully engaged, students who are somewhat engaged, and students who we still had yet to engage in all the efforts we had made to do that. And just today, we assigned each one of those students a case manager who is really going to be the point person working to engage them. And even before that, we, you know, we came to realize through the conversations and the communications that our teachers and our staff were having that there were some things that might be, like minutes on a phone, or like internet access, or a child staying at a grandparents'. And as we recognize those things, we've been able to take steps to address them. So I think we have been very successful, much to engage 100% of our kids, and we are going to do everything we can to get there.
I know Inter said internet access was a challenge and had come up a few times, that some of the kids actually don't have it. It's not available, the high speed's not available. And some of it might have been at the shelter. Has that been addressed? Or those kids been situated there to get their needs?
I reached out to the county when we learned that the Skyleran did not have internet access, and we had kids who weren't able to participate in the virtual learning. And actually, Dan McCoy's office immediately got in touch with the leadership at the shelter, and within three days, they had access points in place there. Those aren't our only kids, though. We did have a few other families struggling. One of the issues from an education perspective in all of this is our ventilators in education are hotspots. You cannot get your hands on them right now. So we actually were able to work with T-Mobile, and they took some initiative, and they actually took existing phones and converted them to hotspots. So we were able to get our hands on some of those and have those ready to get out to families and kids should they need them.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving along to information material. Our next Board of Education meeting is Monday, May 11 at 6:30 PM. We're going to stick to that.
Well, that's gonna, I would say it's subject to change. As far as the board meeting, yes. As far as budget, and we'll talk about it more in the budget workshop that follows, certainly as we get more information and more definitive dates around when and if we are going to vote and how we are going to vote, we may need to have additional workshops. So certainly, as soon as we know that, we will publicize that. There are a lot of things we are waiting on answers for before we can do that. The other thing, Jeff, I would like to comment on here is normally, this time of year on this list would be some pretty special occasions for our kids, and in particular, our graduates. Field Day would be coming up, some things that are very near and dear to the hearts of everybody. And I want to say to that, and I want to thank a couple of people who have been providing virtual opportunities, our virtual multicultural fair. It certainly wasn't the same, but it was pretty neat to see the kids doing some of the things they were doing and share that out. Our PTA did a spirit week, and also our teacher parade I already talked about. Stay tuned, there's something good coming from the teachers next week, and if I can get my part down, that is. So, and I just want to comment in particular on the end-of-the-year events. Eighth-grade ones in particular. I've been in conversation with Herman, who is the class advisor. He has actually had a virtual class meeting with his class. We know their end of the year will probably look different. We are committed to doing everything we can to acknowledge and recognize their achievements. We are going to do everything we can in some way, shape, or form, even if it has to be virtually, to still have those end-of-the-year celebrations, events that are so important to our kids and to our community.
Okay, miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything? Go ahead, Courtney.
I just wanted to also share my thanks and appreciation for the teachers and the faculty and staff at Menan's. My experience has been awesome. My kids' experience has been awesome. I don't know all the teachers, obviously. I want to call out Mrs. Robuski in particular because Evelyn's been having a great time. They love the parade. I heard from a lot of other parents who love the parade, parents of little kids, who the parents were crying because it was a really emotional day. And the kid loved it. We were outside in the rain for a while, and the kids didn't care because when the teachers came by, they were so excited to see them. Actually, we got to see them twice because of the little extra loop there at the end. But I want to thank the faculty and staff so much for the great job you guys have been doing to engage the kids and really provide meaningful learning and opportunity for them. And it's awesome, and it makes my life as a parent much easier, and it helps the kids to be good. So thank you all for that.
Jen?
I just wanted to start with you, Dr. Long. Just sitting on the other side of the table as a teacher in a district, it has been unprecedented times. It's, and the way that you went through this and took your staff through this is absolutely commendable, and also to Mrs. Schroder. And I just wanted to thank the teachers also because it is really hard some days to be a teacher and a parent in the household at the same time. And I'm friends with one teacher on Facebook who, you know, was second-guessing themselves. And I just want to say, whatever you're doing, any connection you're making with children right now is what's important. We're not producing the greatest and the most fabulous lessons this way. It's not how we would want to do it, but the effort and what we're providing for our children, for the children of Menan's is really commendable. So thank you. Thanks, Jen. And I'm sure the teachers appreciate that as well.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Bill.
Is my hand up? Can you see me?
Yes, I can see it.
So this is unique for everyone, and everyone is in the same position. I just wanted to, I'll share, I've said it in some other emails and some on-phone conversations with some of you. At least everyone knows, you can't say enough about what the administration's currently doing to make things happen. Between the building project, making the building safe, looking to the future, supporting the teachers and what they need, and making that happen. The teachers, again, you can't say enough about what they're doing. From my middle school perspective, it's been great. Every day, they're online, virtual, one or two times a day. So you can't say enough about what everyone's doing to make this difficult time easier, right? So I'll say my thank you that way. The parade was great. Dr. Long came by my house with the top down on a rainy day. It was great to see all the teachers, the support staff, Mike the chef, custodial staff, you know, gym teacher. It wasn't just, it was everybody. I'm pretty sure everyone in the school was in a car driving by my house. So that was great to see, too, and that was a great community effort. If there's something new to come, and there's another around that the teachers are doing, that's great. I've seen some great stuff online. I'd love to see all the teachers play an instrument or sing a song because those are viral and they're awesome.
Stay tuned.
I would hear that, so thank you. But, you know, listen, I believe we're doing everything we're supposed to. This isn't going to be a short term. Everyone says it's long term. Let's get through it. Stay home, stay away from friends, stay away from kids. Let them talk online, use up your minutes, all those things that, you know, you don't want the kids to do online, but now's the time. Let them use the computers, keep them away from other kids at other houses. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, and don't forget to fill out your census.
Yes, yes. Only 44% of the, in New York State, has been filled out as of today, 44%.
Yep.
Big call, big push for that. So yes, I concur. Something, John?
Nope. Everybody, I want to echo what everybody's already said. It's been an amazing achievement, what staff and faculty have done in the last however many weeks. Lost track. But yeah, and I just want to say, it makes me really proud to be a part of this community in the way that this school has risen to an incredible challenge. So thank you for everything everybody's doing.
Yeah, I would, I would, I can't add anything else than anybody else has said. But, you know, I will add one thing, that my daughter, Allison, who's in middle school, is excited every day to see Mrs. Ball. She's, for some reason, she's found an extra gear with reading and all that, and she is so happy to see Mrs. Ball every day. I don't, I don't see this kid jump out of bed very often, but when Mrs. Ball's, when she has a call, she's right front and center, ready to go. So, you know, so a special thanks and shout out to Mrs. Ball and to all the teachers and support staff, the hourly staff, everybody that's been pulling together to make everything happen. I've talked to numerous bus drivers when they come by to deliver the meals during the day. And I can't thank everybody enough just for pulling together, really making this happen with some, you know, some grace and some style and really, you know, during a very, very rough time. People have remained calm and cool and collected around all this, and the kids noticed that. So, you know, I always say to my kids, "If you see me nervous, you should be nervous." So it's important that they've seen that in their teachers as well. And I thank them for everything that they've been doing. I hear that there was some kind of middle school vote for a TikTok or something that's coming. So I won't give it up, but I heard a little chit-chat the other day about that, so I'm looking forward to that. But once again-
And there was a hands-down winner, from what I heard, so.
Yes, I heard. We'll, we'll all appreciate that TikTok when it comes out, and I'm sure it'll go viral. But once again, I really can't stress how much we appreciate everyone's efforts during this very, very difficult time, you know, and all that everybody said. Thank you, for sure.
Thank you. And I know we have some of our staff members in as attendees tonight, but I will make sure to convey to all of them your thoughts tonight, and it will be, I'm sure, most appreciated.
Thank you. We will move along. If nobody else has anything to public comment, please note during the public comment sessions, members of the community may address the board on agenda and non-agenda items. The board president may limit remarks of individual speakers to a reasonable time. Speakers must identify themselves and the topic on which they would like to make remarks. And I believe we have a couple of questions. Actually, one, I'll do the first one, if that's okay. It's from, what's that? Go ahead. Yep, so from Vanessa Varkato. A virtual PTA general meeting is being planned for April 30 at 6:30 PM, and details will be sent to the membership. So just reinforcing the 30th of April at 6:30 that there'll be a virtual PTA meeting. So please mark that on your calendars, folks.
And if I can share with Vanessa whatever she's sending out, share with us, and we will send it out through our vehicles as well.
The second one is from Madeline Royal. She wrote us an email. It says, "First and foremost, I would like to thank you all for the tremendous job you are doing with our children, especially during these very challenging times. As we move forward in the growth of the Menan School District and faculty continue to retire, I would like to see the faculty makeup reflect that of the community. Unfortunately, COVID-19 is bringing to light adversities that have existed long before. However, this has been ignored for too long, and we are now seeing the effects at significant proportions. As we continue to grow as a community and school district, it is imperative that the youth of our community see role models that they can relate to. I love the community. I have grown to know, I have grown to know. However, I would be remiss not to acknowledge what is being reflected. Be well, Madeline Royal." Well, thank you, Madeline, for your comments. It'll be duly noted for the record, and we appreciate that. That's all the ones that came through that I can see.
Same here, Jeff.
Okay. We are gonna-
Are there any members, are there any people in the village or community online right now?
Yes, there are. Hold on, I have to click a different thing, Bill.
Just, I was curious. My screen only shows, you know, the six and seven people.
Right, because you're not the host, Bill. I am. There are eight folks in attendance right now, and at one point earlier tonight, there were-
Okay, great.
Bill, you should be able to see it. There's a little person on the bottom. If you move your mouse around where the mute is, there's a little person there. If you click it, it'll show participants. At the bottom of that list, you can click View All Attendees, and it'll pop up for you.
The little person?
There's like a little circle.
Some shoulders, yeah, head and shoulders there.
Panelists, eight.
But go to the bottom of that list now and click View All Attendees.
So I'll read them. Ms. Schroders on, our nurse is on, Ms. Dambro, Charlie Blanchett, Ms. Vandenberg, Jennifer, Ms. Robuski, Madeline Royal's on, and Vanessa is on. That's at least currently what we have. Now you're on mute, and you're talking.
I just, I just got it, and I was just able to see the list, so thank you.
Okay, no worries.
No worries. And you got to send instructions out with this prior to the meeting or something.
I think for the first time, we did a pretty good job.
I think it was okay.
Trust me, I've been a lot, I've been part of probably six to eight Zoom types of calls every day, and we did just fine, trust me. I was on a family call at Easter that was like, people like, "Am I on mute?" People having conversations, people don't know their video buttons. It was actually like comedy hour. And I very much appreciated it.
Bill, it's a good thing you have middle schoolers because they can figure the tech out for you.
Exactly. I mentioned that earlier. Yes, I, you can hear me talking now, right? Yes, I mentioned that earlier, that I would have to call one of them in for some tech support. But we're good. We're all good. Thank you.
Okay.
Before we adjourn, I just want to point, we are going to move right into the budget work. I may request that we move into executive session following that. So we have some personnel stuff to talk about. And when we get to that point, I'll kind of explain for those people participating how that will work, and for the board members, how that will work.
So we are going to go, do we have to do the motion, or we just go right in?
Do a motion to adjourn, yep.
So I need a motion to adjourn into the budget. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Moving to the budget.
Okay. Give me just a minute here to re-cnoider. And we had a budget workshop that had been scheduled for between when we last met and now. But certainly with everything that happened and a lot of information that we needed, we were not able to have because of the circumstances. We canceled that meeting and kept this regularly scheduled, April 22 meeting. Now, what I am going to attempt to do right now, folks, is to share my screen, so you will actually see the PowerPoint presentation, so bear with me while I do that. All right, can everybody see that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so. It's not up there, but I think you know it by heart, my words we live by during budget. And I think at, no other time is it more important than now that we have to move forward from what we know to be true at this point in time. Historically, at this point in time, we know a lot more than we did in our March meeting. But we are really in quite a different circumstance and situation right now. And there remains a lot of unanswered questions. That said, I don't think it does any of us any good to speculate. Actually, when Kathy and I were sitting here in the office on Sunday putting this together, that was the same time the governor was making some comments that were pretty alarming. And we'll touch more on that in just a little bit. And again, my second point I always make is we will continue- we will continue to be cautiously optimistic, and we will hope for the best, but plan for the worst. So, when we last met and when we were coming together tonight, what we expected was updated projections and information, and quite frankly, we were probably pretty sure we would be able to move forward or be very close to adopting a budget. What I was going to bring you was our draft three budget for 2020, 2021, in hopes that it may be our final budget adopted by the board to go to our voters. And we were hoping for those last few updates that we were waiting for from the governor's office to finalize those things. But then 318 happened. That's not all bad news. There are some things we do know or changes for the positives since we last met. Tonight, you awarded the transportation contracts. Knowing that was coming, we were better positioned to really identify what our transportation costs would be anticipated for next year, and Kathy had worked to do that and incorporate those figures in what you see tonight. Again, we continue to have conversations. We had our first half of the year billing with our high schools for tuition. That gives us a really good sense of what the remainder of the year is going to be and anticipate what our costs are going to be for next year. You made CSE and CPSC approvals, and one shout out I was remiss in giving earlier tonight. Despite not being on campus, our CSE and CPSC teams have done their due diligence to be able to hold their meetings remotely and continue moving that process forward, though it's still in progress. It typically is this time of year. Kindergarten registration, we had started that process. We had had the parent information night. We know we have thirty students in progress. What we have had to delay is our screening and and final confirmation of who that will be, so that remains in process, in progress as well. Our BOSI's final service request is really what we tell BOSI's now we are going to want next year and determine the cost associated with that. I will tell you that is close. But as you know, and we'll talk a little bit more about in a few minutes, we had really focused this year on what we were mandated to do, what our goals told us to do, and what we might hope and want to do. And some of those things may now need to change, which may tweak this by BOSI's final service request a little bit. And staffing, we know is still in progress. We do have two retirees and a principal retiree, and we are working through the process of identifying our needs and filling those roles. So, the next slide is one that you saw when we last met. So, this is the pre 318 circumstances, where you see our foundation aid, and then you see a number of other aids. And again, you saw this slide when we last met. That first numeric column to the left is what the governor's runs said. The second column is, which is labeled increases and decreases, is because those are expense based aids, and the numbers he is working from are dated numbers. So, every year, we update these figures with our numbers. Certainly, the most significant one you see here, and we talked about it length when we last met, is the building aid, and that is based on our earlier conversation tonight's meeting, that we will be completing our project, anticipated closeout of December 2020, so that aid will begin to flow next year. That smaller figure that came out of the governor's run didn't take into consideration the sizable project that we are doing now. So, when we left last time, from what the governor's run said to what we calculated as our reality showed showed an increase for us. This slide is a little bit busy, but I wanted to give you as much information as we could, and Kathy's here to answer questions. So, really, though, the first two columns are what you saw on the previous slide. Okay, if you move to the third column, this was the adopted budget by the governor, given the pandemic. Now, I will say, as far as foundation aid to some of our neighboring districts and specifically to our city districts, our change was minimal. So, you see a reduction in foundation aid of only eighteen thousand dollars. The other adjustments, again, in my mind, are minimal. What I really want to draw your attention to on this slide is down in the bottom, what is being listed as the last, in the last three lines, it says pandemic adjustments total, and then federal cares restoration. So, in the governor's enacted budget, he essentially decreased our aid by eighty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. But then he put it back in as part of the federal cares restoration. That's a number in my mind we have to be very cautious about, because we don't control that. Frankly, the governor doesn't control that. That's going to be dependent on the federal monies that ultimately flow. And it's going to be impacted by the over overall impact on the state. So, let me go on, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then if you have questions, we can address those. So, really, in straight out foundation aid, from what we were expecting from the state and what we actually got, we were only looking at a reduction of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Now, we don't like to see any reduction, but this is one that I believe we could have managed and mitigated. So, I want to, before we go any further, then take a look at the first three drafts that we've seen this year. And I'm going to go through the first three slides quickly, because I summarize them all together on on the final slide in this segment. Before I go through this slide, though, let me remind you, when we started budgeting this year, we looked at what are we mandated to do? What are those things that we have an obligation under education law to do? We then put a focus on those things that our goals are directing us to do, things that we identified you as a board for the district that were important enough for us and for our kids and for our school community that we codified them as our goals, and we put some things into this budget that would help us achieve those goals. And finally, the last thing was some things that we really, really would love to have. We would love to have for our kids. We would love to have for our community, but that don't directly, and I'll use that term loosely, impact kids. So, when we came through, I'm sorry, in this first budget, we did not include those wants and needs. We said, we're still at a thirty thousand dollar gap. I'm not sure I feel comfortable putting those in there. Give me some guidance and direction from the board. At that point in time, the board said, let's see what that that would look like and what that would take for us. So, that's when we came to you with draft two, where we kept the mandates in there, we kept the goal driven things in there. We added the wants and needs. And with our historic adjustments and going out at the cap, that created a pretty insurmountable number in my mind. And we had great discussion around that at the last meeting. We agreed that there was really no give to get. There wasn't things we could take away to get those things. And we didn't fail in fairness to our voting public that we could go out above the cap to get those. So, the guidance and direction this time around, even though things have changed since then, was to take those things back, take those things back out, do a little tweaking, you know, trim the edges. That's some of the things you saw a little bit earlier with the tuitions and now the transportations, and see what we can get, get that gap down to. So, I'm pleased to say, despite the challenges we have and may continue to face, the draft three budget with our historical gap or with our historical adjustments, utilizing fund balance no more than we have historically, we were at a zero gap. And that, again, kept the mandated things and kept the majority of the goal driven things. And as I said, here's that summary, so you can see across the board the three budgets to date. And I guess I would stop it at that point and ask if there are any comments, any questions, any thoughts? Bill, go ahead. You gotta unmute yourself. There you go.
You can hear me now, right? So, the first thing that pops out in my head is when the federal government doesn't give back the the cares restoration money. So. You're going to account for that ninety thousand dollars, yes? I'm a slide ahead of you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, and let me keep going. All right, so as I indicated, what is included here, the, those things that we need, we know chief department was additional ENL support for our population. Also, for the most part, those goal driven things. So, and I think if you know, I think our conversation, and I think it is becoming more apparent during this time, is the mental health needs of some of our students, and I think they will only increase in the given circumstances. Oops, sorry about that. We had a social work position in to to address some of those needs. That is in the draft three budget. What is not included, again, is those things that we might like to do. The other piece that is not in there right now is the PD funds that were associated with the diversity and inclusivity training that we had begun to look at as a district. And that was not necessarily a trade or a give to get, and I certainly entertained conversation from from the board around that. But that dollar amount was minimal compared to a position. And in my mind, that social but that's my mind, so I'll, I'll open it up to the board for questions, comments, conversation.
I didn't have a last.
Just say that last piece again.
Yeah, someone was not on mute, so they were shuffling of papers or something. So, if you could say the last part again, please.
The part about the professional development? Yes, please. Okay, so what we did take out that was in the last draft and did not surface to this draft was the the money that had been allocated for additional professional development around diversity and inclusivity. Want me to keep going?
Question or comment? I wonder if there are. You know, I know there are initiatives around this, talking about diversity, inclusivity. I wonder if there are like, you know, grants out there or something that maybe our committee could look into to maybe give us an outside source of funding for the PD, because I would really, I would hate kind of pushing down the road, and I'd hate to push it down farther.
With you. Certainly, we can look at that. Unfortunately, a number of the grants that are available based on numbers of students, not necessarily percentages that sit in certain categories, but also on our socioeconomic status as a district. And I'm not going to get on my soapbox here about we are viewed as a wealthy district, even though we have a lot of challenges and circumstances. But even just this week, there was some COVID-19 grants announced, and it will tell you which districts are eligible for them and which districts are not, based on a number of factors, and we did not qualify for those. But I'm certainly willing to explore that and to work with, we've worked with BOSI's grant services before to see what might be out there. I guess. Go ahead, Jen.
All right, no, I was just gonna say something I hate to see go, because I know it was part of one of our goals. And for our goals, and I know it's something that we've been really trying to work hard for. I don't know, that just.
How much was it?
We had earmarked ten thousand dollars for next year. Knowing that it wouldn't be a one year process, and we were looking at that being a recurring expense for a couple of years. Certainly understand, hold that thought as we go into the the next couple of slides. So, and this is to Bill's point. So, we can't count on that that eighty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars in federal cares money. That's the initial question mark. So, that was part of the budget, but again, that's not necessarily up to the governor. Couple that with the fact, also part of the inactive budget are these three look back periods. And for those of us who lived through the 2008 recession, we've, we've experienced this. This is the opportunity or the authority provided in the budget for the governor to say at certain points during the year, yes, I gave you this much money, but now I might take some back. So, that federal cares money of eighty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars is based on what we know we're getting from the federal government right now and what is anticipated to be revenue losses for the state as a whole. If those revenue losses come in beyond what is anticipated, then the governor will take back the money to offset that across the board from any entity that receives state aid. The first two look back periods, the first is April 30th. That we'll know by the time we come together and meet next time, if indeed any was taken back and how much. So, though I'm not thrilled about it, at least we will know what we will know by shortly after April 30th. The May 30th one, depending on what they decide for a budget, may get.
Isn't it June 30th, the second one?
I believe.
It was the period, it was May, the period that they're looking at is between May 30th and June 30th, or May 31st and June 30th, as far as the, that's the look back period.
All right, let me confirm that, Jeff. Really, the one that scares me the most.
Yeah, December.
December 31st. Because this loss of revenue is not going, at the state level, is not going to be fully realized immediately, and there will be trickle down effect. So, you know, the concern is, to Bill's earlier point, will some of that eighty-four thousand dollars be there? Will none of that eighty-four thousand dollars be there? So, that is what Kathy and I were sitting here doing Sunday afternoon, while at the same time, unbeknownst to us, the governor at the tail end of his press conference, during the question and answer, made a comment about fifty percent reductions in state aids. Now, he backpedaled that very soon after, the next day at his press conference, and he was talking about twenty percent. But the reality is we can't, at a minimum, we can't reply, rely on that eighty-four thousand dollars. If it's twenty percent, as he alluded to on Monday, that's not much higher than the eighty-four thousand dollars. And Kathy and I have tentative ideas of where we could go and what we could do. If it's fifty percent, then it's a whole different conversation we're having. To that end, we have to keep watching things. We have to keep learning and knowing everything we can know and looking at options. So, those things that we are looking at, and the first bullet is no different than what we always look at every year, regardless of circumstances. We look at our staffing based on our enrollment. We look at our staffing based on our student needs. We know we have retirements this year. We are anticipating the need to replace those retirements, but again, we will carefully watch our enrollment numbers, which, as you know, are higher now than they've ever been. I want to talk a little bit, though, about the second bullet, and alternative options to achieving those gold, that gold driven staffing. And I want to talk in particular for now about the social work position. So, knowing we were faced with this, we began really thinking outside of the box and talking about how can we provide for our kids, what we want to provide, but maybe do it in a different way. So, I have had conversation now with the commissioner of Albany County Social Services to see if there is any possibility to share a service with them. I've had conversation with our BOSI's about bringing on at least a piece of a social worker through them. And, you know, we've had this conversation before. You can't time a crisis or when a kid is going to be in need. So, having a part time position would be very challenging. We actually had very positive conversation, just, was it yesterday or the day before? I think it was two days ago. I can never remember what day of the week it is right now. With one of our neighboring districts, districts about sharing that role and share and sharing some other services and things, quite frankly, which I am very optimistic about. We don't have the answers right now, but it's good conversation. And, you know, if I'm referencing the social. And, you know, if I'm referencing the social work position right now, and I think about sharing as opposed to part-time, I think about bigger districts who have social workers that may be across two or three buildings, we would be like a building. So if we did have an immediate need, we would have a go-to person. Um, so we have committed to getting back with those folks on May 5th to see what we might be able to do collectively. Um, and if I have more information that we can incorporate into what we come together and discuss May 11th, we will certainly do that. Um, and then lastly, the reduction in BOSI services. Um, again, we've been looking at that final service request, and we've been looking at some adjustments, you know, to Courtney's earlier point, she mentioned the ability to pursue grants. We could purchase piece of a grant service through BOSI's to have them help us with that, which will come at a cost, but that cost could, could render some benefits down the road. Um, we know also, goal driven has been our communications. We have a piece of a person on board right now. We were looking to expand that. Um, that may be an area that we can tweak or adjust. So there's some other unknown things. Did somebody have a question?
Courtney had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, before we go to the next slide, um, just when you were talking about the look back period, um, I'm sorry, is that the previous slide?
Yeah.
But the, the money that the governor is talking about taking back, is that part, just the foundation aid?
So, we don't know. Originally, Court, the, the all indications and the guidance and direction we were getting was it was just this $84,000 figure. When he made the comment on Sunday, according to the transcription of the comments, it was 50% of the foundation aid, and we assume that that was the same for the 20% mentioned on Tuesday. But that's one of the unknowns.
Okay, I was just wondering how much of our dollars are exposed? Like even at, at a maximum, the most-
Sure.
-control would be the foundation aid.
So 20% of our foundation aid would be $92,000 and change. 50%. I don't-
The others are all either expense-based or they're local taxes, so the rest of our, the rest of our budget is not, would not be subject to that. Okay, that's just all I wanted to, to clarify. Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions before I go on?
So Dr. Li, I just, I got clarity. Um, Bob Schneider, the executive director of NISB, put this out in his email today. Um, the state, the revenue periods that they're assessing are April 1st to April 30th, which obviously we'll, we'll come together after that's happened. The next period is May 1st to June 30th.
Okay.
And the last one is July 1st through December 31st. So those are the three periods, um, from, from NISBA. And I'll just actually make a, make a plug for NISBA and, and all the other, um, you know, I don't know if board members and such, I, I know Dr. Long and I've been on many calls, um, over the last several weeks, but, um, they've been highly informational, you know, beyond the governor's day, daily, um, you know, video, uh, conference that he does. NISBA's been putting on, it seems like every other Saturday with about 1,500 state leaders, superintendents, et cetera, and they're getting people from state ed, they've got NISBA people on, they're, they're talking about the issues and getting more clarity the best they can. So if you have not been on any of those, um, webinar, Zoom calls, video calls, what have you, I would highly encourage you to do that in addition to, obviously, the NISBA clips that I get and you all get every day, um, because we get information, then it changes, and I find that these webinars are at least keeping us up to date on things as they evolve, which are sometimes by the hour. But I, I found them, uh, very handy. They do, they do take time to obviously, um, view and such, but they do record them. So, um, please take advantage if you haven't, uh, already.
And on that note, too, I sent out the link, and I know Jeff followed up today on the call to action being put out by NISBA and to fill out the letter to our, um, it's our federal representative, so it's, it's pretty important that we do that. Um, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a second, but I had also reached out because I was hoping that would be a venue that we could push out to our community, but as I went through it, and Jeff, I'm sure you saw the, it was really geared to be coming from, from board superintendents. So I actually reached out to Vanessa and the PTA earlier tonight, and they plan on disseminating something that parents can do that is similar via the PTA, and they anticipate that as soon as tomorrow. So if we get that, we get that out to our parents as well.
Yeah, there, there's been a big push around the, around the whole state to do this for, for boards, school, district personnel, ETAs, um, you know, we, we really have to, uh, keep it coming. We, we can't, we can't sit, sit complacent.
Jeff, your comments lead right into, um, some of the points on this next slide, some of these other unknowns as we are budgeting, um, in consideration of COVID-19 and the impacts. Um, and, and some of these, though we still don't have answers, you alluded to the Saturday webinars. The last one I participated in, um, actually Dan Fuller from the governor's office was, was a panelist, as was the commissioner of education. And the commissioner is our flow-through, and she's the connector then to the governor's office to try and have our voices heard. Um, and what I will say is this, though he didn't have answers, and in particular, as it relates to transport, the top bullet, transportation aid, and the bottom bullet, budget vote dates, they were very cognizant of the fact that this is information that districts and boards need as soon as possible to be, to do the best planning that they can have. So again, we don't have answers, but there is a definite awareness that we need those answers now. Um, so transportation aid, um, our transportation aid is one of the expense-based aids that Courtney talked about a little bit earlier, and it's one of those lag aids. So whatever we spend this year, we get aided on next year. We are not transporting children right now. So that creates a question. Will we be fully aided on what we would have or what we are paying to transport children? That remains to be seen. I will say the one thing we have going for us, um, is our, our buses aren't sitting idle and our drivers aren't sitting idle. We certainly aren't using them to the capacity that we would be because they are delivering our meals, um, but we, we have no idea. And again, we could speculate, but I think there's enough uncertainty and anxiety around all of us to begin to do that. We can't what-if ourselves to death. We have to be prepared for it, no doubt. Um, but I do anticipate in, that we will get that answer soon. The building project completion and associated aid, that we are in a little bit better place than we were two weeks ago. Um, it was really unclear, we talked about it earlier tonight in the board meeting, relative to the building project update. We are, we are positioned to finish on time and get that aid flowing. Um, unanticipated mandates resulting from COVID-19 and the associated costs, you know, there could be a laundry list here, things from what do we have to do to rearrange our, our classrooms, our learning spaces? What do we have to do around lunches? Cleaning protocols, what is that gonna look like? What is that going to mean for us? Um, large gatherings, field trips, there, there are so many unknowns right now. Um, and, and, you know, that was another one of the governor's recent comments, before schools reopen, there's a lot of things we're gonna have to figure out. And, and with those things are certainly going to come some costs. Um, and then lastly, again, uh, the budget vote was delayed, we know that, but we still do not have a definitive date of when it will be held. The two dates that are, are bubbling up the most and that we have some guidance and direction around are June 1st and June 9th. The thinking among the experts right now is June 1st cannot happen if all of the guidelines and requirements stay the same, because remember, we always work backwards from that vote date to determine when we have to do other things like, um, advertising and getting ballots out and budget newsletters and so on and so forth. So it is highly unlikely June 1st can happen. It is possible that June 9th could happen. If we get much later than that, it creates a problem because our fiscal year ends on June 30th. But we have to wait and see, and that again, was one of the, um, items that the governor's office did acknowledge we need to have an answer on as soon as we can. So atypical of the third draft of the budget, there is really a lot more now we don't know than, than we knew last time. Um, there is a lot more uncertainty. Um, I'm going to try to remain optimistic. Um, I am going to remain hopeful that those things that are important to us and important to our kids and important to our community, um, and important to our faculty and staff, that we're going to be able to continue to do those things. Um, but right now, we have to wait and see. So when we next meet, um, hopefully we will have some more updates and information. Uh, we will at least have that first look back. We may have some additional information based on those meetings I alluded to earlier about the possibility of sharing some services. Um, we, I, I would hope to have a final draft of the budget. I cannot make that promise with all the unknowns at this point in time, and I hope at a minimum at that point in time, we do know when we're going to be voting, so when indeed we actually need to finalize our budget. Our next workshop is set for May 11th. Um, the question came up earlier, is, is this a definitive date? It's a definitive board meeting date, depending on what we learn and know. Uh, we, we may have to add some additional board workshops. Um, we may be positioned to adopt at that point in time, I don't know if we will have to. Again, this is, this is part of the uncertainty. So that said, that is the presentation, is it in its entirety? Now I would open up for questions, comments, or discussion among members of the board.
I'll chime in. You can hear me?
Yep.
So, everything's unknown. From what I've read in other districts, and I've talked to some North Country districts and things like that, everyone seems to be planning for a 20% cut in foundation aid. Have you heard from other superintendents or other districts outside of NISBA that that seems to be the way that we're going?
I have not admittedly and sincerely from anybody who, who, who would have the knowledge to say that's the case.
I'm just, you know, planning, right? Everyone wants to scramble around, you know, and, and that's what it comes to, it's hurry up and then wait, because no one really knows what the state's doing. And honestly, it's not even the state, because the money comes from the feds, and unless we're funded, it doesn't trickle down to who needs it, which is the teachers and the students in our district. All that being said, I, I'm assuming you have some ideas or plans to present when this goes south for us.
So Bill, we, we have already, and, and you kind of heard that tonight, the plan, tentative plan, um, or at least the first steps of a tentative plan, if it's the $84,000 in its entirety. The 20% for us would be about $92,000, so it's gonna be a similar plan, because that's not that big of a gap between those two numbers. Um, and yes, we're, we're starting, as painful as it is, to look at what that 50% would mean.
Just out of, just for my own, like, sake, because if I don't say it, then I'll say afterwards, oh, man, I wish I said it. I don't think, I, if it is that, let's say a 20% number is coming down the pike, and that's what districts need to, to go for, because he's taking the money back, I would believe it to be in addition to whatever COVID money that they're throwing out there as a, uh, as a freebie or kickback, right? They, they're putting the COVID line in, uh, you called it a, the, the federal CARES restoration money? Yeah.
The, the, the guidance and direction we are getting right now is saying, um, the 20% would be inclusive of the COVID money.
Okay, great. Not great, don't, that's not-
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
Okay.
It's better than the other answer.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm gonna choose not to weigh in. Um, I've been following a lot of stuff, and, you know, a lot of it's just, can be speculation. We certainly need to, like you said, prepare for the worst, of, of course, the best we can. Um, you know, I'll re, say optimist, that there's another, there's another stimulus coming that will come to state and municipalities in some fashion, but that may sweep other stuff, stuff aside, so, um, you know, this is not gonna get, it's gonna get worse before it gets better, of course, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speculate, but I, I think that we're, you know, thank you for putting this together. Um, I hope that we're in good standing when we come back on May 1st, on May 11th, but we still have two hurdles beyond that.
All right, and, you know, I will share a promising bit of information, um, and again, no guarantees here. Um, I'm on daily conversations with the superintendents across the region, Kathy's on daily with, um, the business officials across the region. One of our superintendent colleagues from CAP region, BOSI's, um, has been tapped to sit in on a federal conversation on a regular basis, um, and did so, uh, with one of our federal elected officials this week, who indicated that, um, the most recent federal package that came out is what they are referring to as COVID-3, that did not touch education at all, um, it touched businesses primarily, um, though all indication is COVID-4 is on the horizon and is specifically geared towards K-12 and higher education. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that that is the case. Anything else from members of the board? I'm just gonna check to see if anybody's, um, we do have a couple of comments from folks who are viewing. Um, hearing the 20%, um, the District 3 draft compared to some other districts, um, is, is certainly better than what some other districts are facing. You know, Jen, the big city districts are, who are wholly dependent on aid, I, I can't even imagine the implications here. Um, and, and echoing your thoughts, too, Bill, that hearing, and this is a Long Island and locally, that people are anticipating 20%. I would love to do that, but I can't plan just for that, um, because I, I don't have any, anything definitive. I wish I did.
Speculation at this point.
Sure. All right, does anybody have anything else relative to the budget presentation? Okay, so now we're, I'm going to request, um, and this might be a little odd for our attendees, so I am going to request that we hold an executive session for personnel purposes. In order to do that, though, we have to re-enter the regular meeting, okay? So I'm going to need a motion to re-enter the meeting, and then a motion to adjourn to executive session, which we're going to do offline, and I'll explain that in a minute. Um, what I will say to the public, and I do this when we are in a, a real, sitting face to face in the same room, it is highly unlikely people come back into this session and take any action. I do not anticipate doing that at all, based on the conversation we are going to have. However, I will leave the meeting open, because we are going to have to then come back and re-enter and adjourn. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
So the first thing we need is a-
Motion to re-enter, right? Motion to re-, re- public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, now I need a motion, executive section.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Yeah.